Good evening, everyone. The hour being 5:31, welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for this day, October the 9th, 2017. I would ask that we spend a moment of silence and then I will conclude with a prayer as we remember those folks in Las Vegas that lost their life. Creator of our bodies, creator of our souls, we humbly ask that you lift up the families and friends of the lost people that fell under the hulls soul of a troubled man in Las Vegas last week. We ask that you help us as we have lost sight of the precious gift of life which you have given us. As a community, which is a word derived from two words, common unity, we must regain our sense of the value of life itself, for it is through you we are granted life and the gifts of life itself, and it is through you we will regain our understanding of your precious life in this world of common unity. Guide us and protect us as we seek to follow your ways and as we marvel at the gifts you have given us. We ask these petitions in your name. We're going to be led by Commissioner Terry. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Commission, you have before you the amended agenda with one slight modification. Does that meet with your approval?
What is the modification, Mayor?
We had one more proclamation added to this.
Oh, okay. Got you. Fine by me.
Yes.
Good? Okay. We are now in the section of the meeting we call "Here the Public." This is the public's opportunity to speak on any particular item that is on the agenda. There will be an opportunity later on in our meeting after we get through the business section for another "Here the Public" session about anything other than what's on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move right on to Item 1, which is the approval of the minutes for the previous meeting, that being September the 25th, 2017. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion? If you want to call the question, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 2 is a banner request from the folks at Danville High School doing Dancing with the Stars. I think that's Danville High School. Hi there. Hi Kathy.
Hi. Thank you all for allowing me to come. Sam Pollan was supposed to come, but something came up, so I apologize. I don't have flyers or anything to hand out to you all, so I came at the last minute. I just wanted to come back to you all again. We always ask to put a big banner out front, and we'd like to see if you would let us put a banner out for October 30th, the two weeks prior to the event, which is November the 11th.
Commission, everybody good with that?
I move that we approve that request.
Commissioner Cottle?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Atkins, and we would just ask that you make sure that that meets the dimensions and all the other criteria, and you can get that from Mr. Scott, City Manager.
It's the same one we used last year, so that would be okay then.
That works.
Okay. And we'll drop that off tomorrow. Sam said he would bring it tomorrow.
Do you have Commissioner Siri dancing again?
No, but he did a good job last year.
I care.
And I think, Mr. Atkins, you've danced for us before, and you did a nice job.
That was a long time ago.
And we've been begging the mayor, and maybe next year he'll be able to do it for us. And either any of you that would like to... Anybody in the audience?
I was a judge, that's as far as you need me to go.
Well, we have a good time. It's a great event, and it's a major fundraiser for the Danville schools, so we really appreciate that.
It's a real nice production.
It is. It turns out really nice. And if you guys in the audience want to come, it's November 11th from 6:00 to 8:30. It's a lot of fun. It's $10 to get in, and all the money goes to the schools to help with mini-grants and field trips and art and technology, and also scholarships for graduating seniors. So, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of Kathy?
Okay.
Commit any other questions, Commission? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, thank you Kathy.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a number of proclamations that we need to impart upon the community, and the first one is the Fire Prevention Week, and I'll ask Commissioner Cottle if he would take the chore.
I will do that. Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, 2017. Whereas the city of Danville, Kentucky is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Danville, and whereas U.S. fire departments respond to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and U.S. home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority of all U.S. fire deaths. Whereas newer homes are built with lightweight material that burn faster than older homes, construction of many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. Whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, the people have as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. Therefore, a home fire escape plan provides the skillset and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation. And whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas home fire escape plans should be developed by all members of the household, and practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas Danville's firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Danville's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of Danville do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the community, and urge all citizens of Danville to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and support the efforts of the Danville Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week of 2017.
Do I hear a motion, we accept the proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Does the chief, do you want to say anything in regards...
You want to present that to the chief?
I can do that.
Yeah.
Don't catch one.
Sure. I'd just like to say that it gives me great pleasure to present this community with our fire prevention program every year. I did it for 11 years as the fire marshal, and seeing little kids soak up that information, taking it back to their parents, the parents coming and visiting the fire station, you know, it really does work. There's been numerous occasions where, hey, I've learned that at fire prevention that saved a life. So, thank you all for this, and look forward to seeing everybody out at the fire station sometime.
If you don't mind, and I'm catching you cold, I know, but approximately how many runs, all runs, how many do you all make a year?
Eighteen hundred and fifty.
That's a bunch.
Closing in on eighteen hundred, yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
So, yeah. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. The second proclamation is for Arbor Day, and I ask Commissioner Cyrus to handle that.
I'd like to do that. Proclamation Arbor Day, 2017. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton of Nebraska City proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the United States with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the Arbor Day Foundation has a mission to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees, and Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Danville's Garden Club annually plants a tree in Danville, and the city's Public Works Department has an annual tree planting program to enhance the quality of life and beauty in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Mike Paris and the City Commissioners of the city of Danville on this ninth day of October 2017 do hereby recognize Saturday, October 21st, as Arbor Day, and further urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and all future generations.
Do I hear a motion, we accept the proclamation.
So moved.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins. How about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Discussion?
Ms. Brantley's here.
You want to present that to whom?
Brantley.
All right.
Jane Brantley.
Jane Brantley. Jane, thanks for all you do.
Do it front, so they can see ya.
Thank you, Jane, for all you all do.
Thank you. I'm accepting this proclamation on behalf of the City Beautification Committee, and I would also like to take this opportunity to invite the public and the commission and the city staff to our second annual Arbor Day celebration, which will occur on Saturday, October 21st, from noon until 3:00 p.m. at Whistler Park downtown. That will be followed by a special storytime at the library, and later that evening, a movie at Constitution Square. So we're inviting family and community members to make a day of it downtown, start with breakfast in one of our downtown restaurants, lunch in a downtown restaurant, dinner in a downtown restaurant, and celebrate Arbor Day with us on Saturday, October 21st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane.
You may.
And Item 4 is a proclamation... Oh, we need to vote, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 4 is a recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I think it is most appropriate that we have a survivor of that situation. Read the proclamation for us. Commissioner Terry?
Whereas the month of October has been set aside as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to educate women and men on the importance of early detection of breast cancer. And whereas this disease is the second most commonly diagnosed cancer in women and men in the U.S., and the second-leading cause of cancer death in women, with an estimated quarter million new cases of invasive breast cancer expected to be diagnosed among women and men in the U.S. this year. On average, one woman is diagnosed every two minutes. And whereas early detection and treatment can save lives, we encourage all women and men to find out if they are at increased risk by completing the necessary screenings. And whereas the Efer McDowell Women's Breast and Health Center offers the latest technology for breast imaging using 3D... Help me out here, Bert.
Tomocensus.
Tomocensus mammography. The professional mammography technicians of Efer McDowell provide compassionate service to patients in a calm, private, serene environment. And whereas Efer McDowell radiologists perform a thorough reading of the imaging studies and can provide results the same day. Further, the program seeks to minimize the time from a suspect mammogram to diagnosis and, if necessary, to treatment. And the Efer McDowell Cancer Program is accredited by the American College of Surgeons Commission on Cancer. Efer McDowell Health is committed to providing advanced diagnostic equipment, effective treatment, and compassionate care. Whereas we encourage everyone to display their support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month by displaying bold pink ribbons showing support for breast cancer survivors, and reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness of the disease and as a symbol of hope. Therefore, Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the city of Danville on this ninth day of October do hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to celebrate life beyond breast cancer by supporting and attending events in the city that recognize breast cancer awareness during the month of October and throughout the year.
Do I hear a motion of acceptance?
So moved.
Thank Commissioner Cottle. How about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion?
We have representatives here.
Correct.
What about first?
Yeah, let's vote first. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
We have Bert Piper and Pat Hill from Efer McDowell to accept our proclamation. And they're going to give us some information as well.
Excellent. You notice some of us have some form of pink on today.
Some of them.
Some form.
I thought my whole towel was pink. What's wrong with you, man?
Yeah. Thank you all. Bert, you got something for us?
Yeah, very briefly. Just wanted to tell everyone that Efer McDowell stated, "We are committed to the best care here. We have state-of-the-art technology, and we now have a women's breast center that is, to me, second to none anywhere in the state of Kentucky." It offers a very peaceful, quiet, serene, and very, very private place for women to have mammograms here, and we're probably the only person within 100 miles, only institution that's doing same-day reads. It's very important to a lady to find out, you know, do I or do I not have breast cancer at this time. We are also working to minimize that timeframe from a suspect mammogram to a diagnosis and, if necessary, to treatment in order to expedite care for ladies. Now, Pat Hill, who is over this unit, is going to give you a brief description of the process and the patient experience.
Thank you. I brought some pamphlets. It has some pictures in it, and it kind of explains everything. If you all want to grab one, it's on the table back there. But our biggest thing is making the ladies feel comfortable, so when you come in, you get a warm robe. We put your belongings in a secure locker. After your procedure, you wait. We go for coffee, tea, snacks. There's spa music planned. There's some aromatherapy. The ladies really seem to enjoy that. I've had a few say they wasn't ready to leave. They want to stay an extra 15, 20 minutes, so we just let them sit there and relax. And then the radiologist will review the mammogram, and then we'll come and give you your results. If you need extra imaging or ultrasound, we'll do that at that time. And then you may meet with the radiologist, and he will explain if you have to have a biopsy or something. We have a special room set up that's very private. We can bring the family in. They'll explain everything that you need to know, and then you're on your merry way. Most ladies think this has been a very relaxing atmosphere, a very calming. They're not as nervous, especially our repeat customers that's had bad news. They find that the atmosphere takes that tension away, that stress. So we're very proud. I'm very passionate. It was a labor of love, but I think it turned out really well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight. Item 5 is Resolution Number 2017-10-09-01. This is in regards to a veteran park reaffirmation. It's something that I believe is done every year. Donna, anything you want to add to that, or anyone else?
No, we just need approval, and Jack's taken pictures, who's the point of contact with this, and we just have to send it back in saying we still have it in this shape and that we're still using it.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
To approve Resolution 2017-100901.
I defer to the lady for her...
Absolutely.
And a second by Commissioner Cottle. Let me say that I want to thank Magistrate Hendricks for not only taking me out there and walking me through that park and explaining all of this, but the detail in which he deals with that park, and the people he knows, and the fact that what is out there is a labor of love from him. If you don't, if you take just 10 minutes, stop out there and just walk up in the park. It's a lot different inside than it is passing by on the bypass. But I want to thank Magistrate Hendricks for his labor of love and guidance on this.
For those who may not know, you want to tell us where the park's at? I know where it's at, but...
Well, it's, what is it? It's down at the base of White's Park, which is the fairgrounds, which is across from the BP Station on the bypass. Is that how you want to say it?
Millennium Park, and then, of course, the fairgrounds, and right there, yeah. Across.
We have a motion. Any other discussion? None? Chair, call a question. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 6 is you have a reappointment recommendation with regard to tourism, and that is Brittany Adams of Warren Wood Manor. Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion to accept the reappointment of Brittany Adams to the...
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, and second by Commissioner Cyrus. Any discussion?
This will be a full term for her. She was fulfilling someone else's term, and this is a full term.
Yes.
She's a very dedicated person, so good appointment.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 8 is the second reading of Ordinance Number 1905. This is the incentive for Dino.
Can we skip a couple?
Did I skip one?
You skipped seven.
I did, didn't I? Let's go back. Beautification Committee.
Hey, don't change the agenda when we approve it, huh?
I just want to make sure you're all awake.
Wendy's not here, she's...
This is for Wendy to serve as the Planning and Zoning Representative on Beautification. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Cottle, thank you. Any further discussion?
Wendy who?
Wendy Rochester.
Sorry.
No, "who" is not her middle name. Rochester is her last name. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Chair, call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Now we'll do the second reading of Ordinance Number 1905, Incentive for Dino. Madam Clerk, you want to read this again?
This is the second reading of Ordinance 1905, an ordinance pursuant to the Kentucky Business Investment Act granting Dino Manufacturing Corporation a wage assessment, granting certain employees of the company a partial credit against city of Danville occupational license tax, and providing provisions for recapture of these benefits in certain events.
I move for approval of second reading of Ordinance 1905.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. How about a second?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Cyrus. Any discussion?
Moving forward.
Seeing none, roll call. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyrus?
Yes.
Item 9 is the report from the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizens. Mr. Grant is with us.
Good evening. I was told by a couple of commissioners to keep this brief, so here goes. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight, and on behalf of the seniors of Danville and Boyle County, I want to thank you for your continued support of the endeavors of the Danville Boyle County Senior Citizen Center. One of the things that we've been hearing a lot in the public is that we need to figure out how to do more with less with the changing environment and funding as it may be coming down the pipe before us. We're doing what we can to respond in kind to that, and I'm very proud to say that over, so far for the year 2017, from January to date, and I've included in these numbers projections based on monthly averages to carry us through to the end of the year. By the end of this calendar year, we will have given 5,673 individual rides to senior citizens in this county. That is a 10% increase over last year's numbers. Our meal service will increase, just for seniors alone, 27.32%. And those two are numbers that I think are very important to hang on to because we've been able to do that without increasing the expense side of our budget. We've implemented some internal cost-saving measures, the way we purchase food, the way we produce food, that we serve to folks. So we're seeing some real increase, not only in the use of our facility, but in need as a whole on behalf of the senior citizens. By the end of the year, including our Adult Day Healthcare Program, we'll serve just shy of 14,000 meals. And again, that is without any added expense to our budget. So it's very important to us that we relay that to both you all as a governing board and the county fiscal court as well, because we do understand that the climate is changing. We have engaged in several cross-agency partnerships. Probably the most celebrated of those would be the garden that we were able to put together with the aid of the Boyle County Detention Center and the Shepherd's House. If you didn't get an opportunity to see that, that has turned out to be a tremendous, tremendous success. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pounds of food were brought out of that garden and either used in our kitchen to serve to the seniors and our Adult Day Healthcare clients, or sent home with our clients for them to prepare fresh from the garden organic meals. You know, we're continuing to do things such as taking trips to the Newport Aquarium. We're going to Lure Lodge on Friday. We went to the Dinner Train earlier this year. Exercise opportunities include yoga, line dancing, square dancing. We're going to have a personal safety education program coming up towards the end of the month. We're partnering once again with the Wilderness Trace Town Development Center to put together a Halloween party for the kids out there, and we were able to do Easter baskets for them earlier this year. One of the things that I'm very proud of our seniors for too is the way they responded to some of the hurricane relief. Their idea, their efforts resulted in us collecting over 12,600 bottles of water. That is, was about five and a half pallets of water that we took to a church over in Garrett County to be delivered down to the Houston area. So as you can see, we're not just a sedentary group of folks that sit around doing nothing. We're busy. We do lots of things. In addition to what we're doing onsite, we continue to deliver commodity boxes monthly to seniors in need in the community. By year's end, we're on track to deliver 334 of those boxes, and in each of those boxes is enough food for a minimum of 10 meals. So if you extrapolate that out, that's over 3,300 meals that we're delivering. So as you can see, we're not just a sedentary group of folks that sit around doing nothing, we're busy. We do lots of things. In addition to what we're doing onsite, we continue to deliver commodity boxes monthly to seniors in need in the community. By year's end, we're on track to deliver 334 of those boxes, and in each of those boxes is enough food for a minimum of 10 meals. So if you extrapolate that out, that's over 3,300 meals that we're delivering into people's homes. I could stand here and talk for hours and hours and hours about what we do and how proud I am of the people with whom I work and the people whom I represent, but I know you've got a lengthy agenda, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Do you have volunteer opportunities out there?
Yes. We oftentimes need volunteers for a variety of things, including drivers for trips would be one thing that we engage volunteers for often. We have folks that come out and do, you know, we had a musician there today. We've had multiple musicians out that just provide entertainment. We've had folks come out and do arts and crafts workshops, lead games, lead different exercises, reality orientation activities, educational seminars. You know, we just did a flu shot clinic, for example. So there's always opportunity for the community to come out and engage with our seniors.
Any further questions or comments?
Good report.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you all very much.
And nice to see you adhere to your instructions.
I was just thinking, I think you're the only one that voluntarily comes and does this.
I'm glad to do it, anytime. Anytime you all want to come out to the center, you're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Doing more, we're doing less, that's a good thing.
That's, that's...
Item 10 is the street renaming request and discussion. Councilor Dexter, we have the outline before us. You want to add anything to it?
I just wanted to give you a brief review of the process that was adopted several commissions ago for naming or renaming city-owned property, which is before you in your book, but I thought it would be beneficial primarily to look at the procedure for doing so, and of course, the first sections of the ordinance resolution rather say what you should consider when either naming a city-owned property or renaming such. Things like the neighborhood or geographical identification, any geological features, historical or cultural significance, the preference of residents in the neighborhood, and those were the major things you should think about, any historical associations, et cetera. But the procedure to be followed is if you deem it necessary to rename a city-owned property, in this case, a street, then you would need to follow the procedure outlined in C, which says, after you make that determination, you would, we would need a vote to do that, and then you would set a deadline for accepting suggestions from the public. One suggestion has already been made, but it would need to be made in writing along with some historical material as to back up that name change request. And others in the community likewise could provide other name suggestions up until the deadline. Those will need to be in writing to the city clerk, and after those are collected, they would be presented to you after the expiration of that deadline, which you could then look at them, add your own suggestions, and then place them for consideration at a future city commission meeting. And you would need to review, again, the criteria of the resolution, and then accept a name through a resolution process. So things to consider, like we talked about the historical significance of the name, one thing you may want to consider is, and I don't know the answer to this, but what is the significance of the current name? Faccler, I don't know. I'm sure someone does, but could provide that to you.
Can you write the visual act of the dead?
Yes.
We'll check. Yeah, you already answered the question.
Sure. So it's often easier to name something that's new, as opposed to changing what is already named. I think in order, if you want to undertake the process, you can do it one of two ways. You could find out what the historical significance is of the current name first, before you make your decision, or it's possible, you could say you are interested in renaming, possibly, take name suggestions, and you don't take any action on it, and you could gather the historical data during the time period that's allowed for names to be submitted, and then make a conscious decision after that data is accumulated for you. I'm happy to answer any questions on the process, but this was developed some time ago so that we would have something in writing that would guide commissions both now and in the future to not allow names, city-owned property to be named at whim, and to certainly, you don't want to lose historical context, but it's often appropriate to gain it as well. So this is the process that was outlined for you.
I think, well, we've essentially already had a request to consider this, but I was thinking along the same lines that you are, Stephen, of I would like to know why it's, why it hasn't current name and the history of that, and I think we need to take that into consideration. So I think we should start the process to consider it after all the history is given.
And can you, can you name one part of the street, keep it as Faccler, and another part, Michael W. Smith Way?
We would need to have some consideration, mostly from an emergency first responder perspective, in naming a portion of a street one name and that of another. All those things could be gathered for you, but the highest concern would be obviously first responses of law enforcement and fire. I don't know if there are examples of linear streets that are in the same direction having different names, they may. I'm not aware of any, but there quite possibly may be. I'm just, off the top of my head, I can't give you an example of one.
Is it, is it Walden?
Main to...
Well, you have the East or West, Main Street, or Lexington Avenue, that type of thing, but this area in, under consideration potentially, is an extremely short street.
Yeah, I'm thinking from Fourth Street West, right by the funeral home.
Well, and on the other side of Fourth Street, I believe it's not Faccler anyway. It's already Roy Arnold.
That's already Roy Arnold.
So maybe that, I guess that's an example of a street then, that's already has two names.
And it's already been done, yeah.
Sure.
Because it was Faccler, all of that was at one time, and then it's been changed because of...
The redevelopment.
Yeah, redevelopment, reconfiguration of the road. This is only going to impact from Second Street to Fourth Street, a very short street. I don't know the history behind the name Faccler, but I think that'd be important for us to find out. But I do, I do support the significance of Michael W. Smith to this community. Not necessarily to Michael W. Smith, but Michael W. Smith's entire family to the community. So I would like to see a start process of considering renaming Faccler Street from Second Street to Fourth Street, Michael W. Smith Way.
Do we just need to direct you to gather the information necessary?
What you would want to do is, I think, I think Mr. Atkins just made, I could consider that a motion, and upon a second and an affirmative vote, you would start the process, and then you would need to agree upon a timeline for names, other names possibly, to be submitted to the city clerk in writing. And staff can, during that time period, gather the historical significance of Faccler for you, for you to consider.
That was my question, in studying this, when Mrs. Calhoun brought it to me, I couldn't tell her from reading this, a timeframe. So it's up to us to establish that timeframe?
Yes.
That's right. You can, if you want to accept names for 30 days, I would think that would be appropriate. You could do it longer, if you so desired or thought that was necessary, but 30 days, off the top of my head, seems appropriate.
We have a motion and a second.
Can I amend that a motion? Friendly amendment to my motion?
Certainly.
To include the 30-day timeframe?
Sure.
Just to get things moving.
I'll steal a second.
We have an amended motion and amended second. Any further discussion?
Well, I think it's important for us to say to the community that this is just a start of the process. Doesn't guarantee the name will be changed at all, at least because they're going to take a look into it, study it.
And I want to be clear that, you know, we're going to explore the name Faccler, so we all understand where that came from, we don't want to throw that away. And certainly, as I look through this resolution that you presented us, it seems like section B, number six, A, B, C, D, has, those questions need to be answered in order for us to move forward, and this is all about city-owned property may be named after an individual or organization when?
Yeah, I think that's important, probably to state on the record too, for the public. It says that the individual must have a historical association with the property in the area, and have played a leadership role in the city through distinguished public service, or the individual's recognized for distinguished accomplishment that inspires or otherwise benefits the public, and the individual has made significant financial or civic contributions to the city.
Chief, what's the street just before Faccler that heads west off of Fourth Street? At T-Bones?
Green?
Dillon?
Dillon?
Bait?
No, not Bait. Dillon?
Dillon.
Dillon?
I bet Earl knows.
He's looking it up.
Going south on Fourth Street, before you get to Faccler, there's a, there's a Pennzoil Quiklube there on the right. What's that street?
Bay.
Is that Bait?
Oh, that's Bay.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm not touching that one.
Well, you got it in school named after him, I'd rather have it in school than in street.
I just said, I'm not touching that one, right?
Check.
But is Faccler the street that actually is beside the funeral home, or that the funeral home is on? Okay.
Funeral home's in between those two.
In between, yeah.
You know, I don't know the names of the streets, but if you look at the old maps for the area through urban development, that section where Roy Arnold Boulevard are, there were a host of streets. Green Street comes into mind, there's a host of them, when all that was taken and demolished and restructured, we lost several street names in that process.
I think, I think Green is largely the key, yeah.
Is that what it was? Okay.
Was it Southern back there?
Southern, there's Southern Avenue, yeah, Southern was back there off of, what is...
Poplar?
Poplar, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. All those are back there. And the right-of-way for those still exists back in there.
Yeah. That really cleaned up the area though, that, yeah.
It did, but if you look at the old map, it was a wild configuration. None of them were aligned. It was, it's an interesting thing to look at historically.
So we have an amended motion and a second, we're in discussion about directing...
Yeah, I think we've clarified it.
So the motion is to consider a renaming of Faccler Street?
And, and you're going to do it anyway, it wasn't part of your motion, I know, but we want to answer these questions, I think, in B six, because it is the resolution, and if they don't fit that...
Sure, so, let's be clear on the process.
Yeah.
The motion is to consider the renaming of Faccler Street from Second to Fourth, and also to have a deadline of 30 days where citizens can submit names, so that's by October, excuse me, November the 9th, and they need to provide in writing to the city clerk the answers to 6D of why the name is historically appropriate for that street renaming. You two can consider alternate names. Those will be compiled for you and presented at the following city commission meeting, at which time you may consider a renaming motion or not.
So the applicant has to answer six?
That's correct.
Okay.
The applicant, I mean, in order to submit a strong application...
Right.
I mean, it wouldn't be required, but you, and the resolution says, before you make a decision to rename city-owned property, those criteria must be met. So if the applicant doesn't do it, it would be incumbent upon you two.
Any further questions or comments? Chair will call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign, motion carries.
Mr. Hud, could you take that information back to Ms. Calhoun about the fact that we need to have something in writing to her group?
He said you'd need to do it.
All right.
Item 11, city manager report, Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir, Mayor Commission, I have a limited number of things to discuss or mention to you tonight. First of all, are a couple of public meetings, the first of those being tomorrow, on Tuesday, October the 10th, here in City Hall, from 6:30 PM. We will continue to have discussions, a community forum regarding our wayfinding process and developing a wayfinding master plan. Tomorrow, John Carman and his associates will present wayfinding recommendations for consideration by those in attendance, and seek input from those regarding recommendations that he has developed. Citizens are encouraged to attend and participate. The meeting probably will end around 8 o'clock or before tomorrow here in City Hall. So that's an important meeting, everyone's encouraged to attend and participate. As you know, the City of Danville is also in the process of developing a master plan to improve our parks and recreation facilities and offerings. To that end, we have, through our contracted consultant, John Carman, we've developed a survey and sent out to city and county residents, we've had over 1,000 respondents to that survey. We've had other conversations with community organizations regarding their thoughts about what we have, what we don't have, what might be nice to have to put into our parks and recreation system. To continue those conversations with an individual, at an individual citizen's level, on the following Tuesday, October 17th, from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock, here on our front porch and in City Hall, the front porch where they're permitting, we're going to have an informal process where individuals in the community can come by, have a brief conversation, stay as long or as briefly as they may wish to stay, to give their thoughts about how we're doing, or what we might need to do, or what the priorities of making improvements to our parks and recreation system would be. So it's a very casual, interactive process contemplated, again, that will be here at City Hall on October 17th, from 6 to 8 o'clock. Should be fun. Pat Hoagland and his staff are going to be here from Branstad or Carroll to facilitate that discussion, so hope all of you can come, and we'll have a great attendance that night. I mentioned a couple of other things. The press of time did not allow us to have the design guidelines, we've talked about previously in a special meeting at our last commission meeting on the agenda, but we intend to have those in recommended format with a resolution for adoption at the next meeting here in October, so that's forthcoming. Many of us, and maybe we'll talk about this, or some of us at least, attended the KLC Annual Convention in Northern Kentucky, which is a very good conference this past week. There were a lot of discussions there, among the city managers particularly at that time, was a discussion about the development over the last several years of air bedding breakfast facilities and home-away rentals and those type of things, and whether our planning and zoning ordinance contemplated that, or whether our various cities, you know, occupational tax or business license fee structure was up to date on those issues, and I think the quick survey that I saw among the other cities on the city manager link is that some are moving in that direction, most are interested in moving in that direction, and I think we as a community need to begin that discussion here. I've had a very brief discussion with the Planning and Zoning Executive Director, Steve Hunter, he said he would be looking at that issue, and we may have something to recommend to both bodies or under our zoning ordinance change, or before the city commission at some point in the future. I don't know if at this time you want to recognize Steve Hunter, he may have something to add more technically or more specifically to the issue.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate our city manager bringing that up, and I...
and I think he stated that pretty exactly what's happening. I guess I have a little different thought, well, same line with his, but Airbnbs are a new product, but yet they kind of exist in the same fashion as bed and breakfasts. However, bed and breakfasts are a different product when you talk to Airbnb folks who run those businesses, and they're different. However, the zoning ordinance is fairly clear on two points, I guess, and it kind of piggybacks what our city manager just said. Number one, we do have a bed and breakfast language in the zoning ordinance, and we say how we treat those and how you get those approvals. We also are very clear in every district what you can do by right. For example, in the GRA district, you can do single-family and duplexes and a couple of other things. Then everything needs another approval. So by inference, if there's an Airbnb in a single-family district right now in the house where someone's doing lodging day-to-day, month-to-month, week-to-week, by inference, you could say that's not permitted in the single-family district. However, what other cities have been doing is to make sure some language goes in their zoning ordinance to clearly identify that product being a new kind of use. So I think, you know, the best way to go about that would be to think about an amendment to the zoning ordinance to fit that use in our list of uses somewhere. It would be very similar to a bed and breakfast, I would think, how we'd want to do an approval. But without a doubt, there's several Airbnbs in our county and in our city as out-of-towner, looking for places to stay. That's the first thing I looked at. And there's several in the city, several in the county, counties around us, all over the state, hundreds of these things that are out there. Other cities have taken a code enforcement stand and said, look, they're not permitted by the zoning ordinance. They're clearly an inn or a motel or a lodge or something. And going back to the base district approvals and saying, look, you can only do this in a single-family. You can only do this in multi-family or whatnot. So I would think it'd be an easy fix, but I could also see it's something we need to address. He's right. It's happening all over the state, and most cities are looking at it from zoning, from business licensing. And then again, just some cities have hotel or motel taxes too. So I think all those issues are why cities are wanting to address that. And then just being fair to the other folks in your town that are in the, you know, overnight lodging accommodation business, that these other entities should probably have to go through some kind of approval process or review process, especially if they're in neighborhoods and on farms and whatnot. So I don't know the clear answer, but I think we could, we could do either one. Look at the ordinance or just go out and talk to these folks and try to figure out what scale and scope they all are. So glad to answer any questions you guys might have about those.
Questions?
Just a quick question is, will you differentiate between if it is, if someone is living there and renting out a room or an apartment? Or as opposed to, I think most of what we have here, the owners are not necessarily residing there, but they are renting the properties out?
So this is very interesting. It's a great question. So years ago, in bed and breakfast legislation, we all knew what a traditional bed and breakfast was. In the area I came from, there was an association that said, these are the rules to be a bed and breakfast. You know, you couldn't cater meals, and there's no alcohol, and it's just breakfast only, and on and on and on. And then over time, these units changed, and those bed and breakfast associations didn't recognize them as formal bed and breakfasts. One of the key things is you normally reside at that bed and breakfast, and then you rent rooms to someone that stays in there. Well, the state law changed a few years ago that changed a bed and breakfast inn and kind of a farm stay-in. It was kind of all tied into agritourism, and they put different definitions of what bed and breakfasts are in the state law. Several of those don't require residency requirement anymore. So you can do a bed and breakfast and live next door, and one kind of bed and breakfast, a bed and breakfast inn, you can live completely off the property. And, and so we had to figure that out, or what are these four or five kinds of bed and breakfasts? There's no longer one kind of bed and breakfast. Then Airbnb comes in as what I'd call the fifth or sixth type. And again, those, those folks sometimes live there, sometimes they don't. Sometimes they provide meals, sometimes they don't. There's different amenities, different ways you book the units. So it's clearly changing, and I think our ordinance needs a housekeeping exercise to address all of those issues and getting compliance, probably with the state law. Now, there's no longer one bed and breakfast. There's several kinds of those. And one's an agritourism product that is totally different. And you can have other things with that bed and breakfast, whether it be equestrian or ATV riding. There's, there's a whole different product. It's a farm stay bed and breakfast that lets you do other things, wedding venues or whatnot. So I'd be glad to look into it and get something back.
Don't look into it anytime soon.
So I know just enough to be dangerous about that, but I think it's something we can look into in our zoning ordinance and try to get you guys a recommendation.
Thanks, Steve.
The final topic I wanted to mention very briefly, Mayor and Commissioners, was the fact that the EDP Board of Directors is going through a reorganization. Their next meeting is scheduled for October 18th. Previously, the Chair has recommended, Ben Nelson has requested that all of those organizations that have appointees to be made for seating on that board do so by this Wednesday, October the 11th. The city and the county both have three appointees, and we're the only entities that have not already made our nominations, or not nominations, our delegations of those representing the city and the county to that board. So I raised that with you tonight in terms of whether or not you may be at the point to make those determinations as to who is going to represent the city on that EDP board in order for the progress of the reorganization to go ahead and to be seated at that October 18th meeting, or if you need more time before you do that. But that's the request from the Chair that we do that in order for the board to be seated by October 18th.
There's a divergence of opinion as to the composition of that. And I would, I think maybe the way to begin the discussion on it is to delineate by majority vote if we want to, if we want to be all city commissioners or city representatives, or if we want some outside citizen input. Counselor, you have a thought?
I just, I just wanted to add, I'm not privy to any of your conversations or thoughts on the matter. I was just going to say initially, when it was contemplated through the negotiations and process, that the city representatives would in fact be city, either elected officials or staff, meaning it was contemplated that it would be city manager, the mayor, and one other elected commissioner. And it would be tied to the term of your office, so meaning if you did not seek reelection or resigned or whatever, that that seat would in fact be vacated. The idea was that you would have people in the city invested in the EDP and the ongoings to report to the body that they represent to have a conscious part and role and investment in the partnership itself. One of the products of the study was in fact to increase that involvement and trust by adding participation. So the idea was that the body itself would gain seats. So I don't know what the commission may contemplate in appointing officials. I will just say that it was not perceived when negotiated that you would appoint others that are not elected officials or the city manager, for that matter.
Well, I think that's, the idea of the new board is there will also be at-large members that the board will be able to choose from the community.
That's precisely it. And so in order to gain true partnership, the idea was to have people that sit at the table who are actually decision-makers, and that would be elected officials and your city manager.
So does it need to say our appointees are mayor, city manager, and another city commissioner? Or is it, and does that other, does that third seat appointed by the mayor? Or is that something that we would vote on?
Well, as is the case for most boards, the mayor
Makes the recommendation.
makes the recommendation for those positions. Now, by municipal order, this body could say that the representatives or the appointed individuals to the EDP board will be the mayor, the city commissioner, the mayor, the city manager, and one city commissioner. And that would leave it to you by resolution to determine who that individual was.
That was my question.
But again, the appointments, I would suggest, in light of how it was negotiated, would in fact be elected officials tied to your term of service.
Commissioners, I'd like to offer another suggested proposal for our three positions on EDP. I had made a note, one should be a city-elected office official. One should be a city staff person, preferably the city manager. And the third one should be a private citizen nominated by the city commission. And all three of these things could be done with, by the mayor with input from the rest of the commission. I still think it's important for us, at every opportunity we get, to allow a private citizen to have some input in the decision-making process in this community. So my take is to have those three representatives, by position, not by name, be a part of what we might determine to do within the next few minutes or the next few weeks.
So you're suggesting the?
Yeah, my suggestion really would say the mayor, the city manager, and a private citizen representing the citizens of this community be our representatives on the EDP board.
And I would, I would just, to understand your desire to have community input in, I would just advise you that it's a 17-member board. The vast majority of the members are in fact private citizens. So even of the governments that are involved in it, the majority of the board are private individual citizens without affiliation to any public agency.
Well, the city, essentially, the representatives, the city representatives on this board will have an opportunity to appoint a private citizen.
At large, absolutely, in conjunction with the other members of the board. That's correct.
We still will have citizen input.
Right. And again, just a reminder to the goal of, and the study indicated that you should increase governmental input and capacity on the board. So if you do in fact choose a private citizen, you are watering down your influence and role in the partnership.
I kind of concurred with Mr. Atkins, but after hearing what you had to say, Stephen, I think that makes sense. There will be an opportunity to, for whoever we choose, to put an at-large person on there. And in addition, there will be several citizens unaffiliated with government on the board anyway. So I feel better about that. So I could, I could live with city manager, mayor, and one of our colleagues. That would be fine.
So in an attempt to move this along, I'd make the recommendation that it be the mayor, Commissioner Terry, and city manager Scott.
I was going to say anybody but Commissioner Terry, but.
Would you like to take that on, Commissioner Cottle?
And before we do that, I guess I need to say this too. Enclosure and diversity has to be important to all five of us, not just one part of us. And you all have seen the list of folks who've been appointed thus far. So let's not miss the opportunity as a city to put some diversity on the committee.
I think that's very important.
I guess I just want to put it on out there. I hate to have to do that all the time.
No, I.
No, it's a fair point. It's a valid point, no doubt.
It is.
And that is one, quite frankly, that the board should consider when they make their at-large appointments, I would advocate.
That's one reason, actually, I'm glad that you're putting Ms. Terry on the, as our representative. I think that's good.
I'll, I'll second our recommendation from the mayor.
Motion is second. We're in discussion.
I'm guessing I should abstain from this vote?
No, you don't have to.
No? Okay.
If you and the mayor abstain, we'll defeat this.
Chair will call the question.
It wasn't too easy.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
I abstained.
Motion carries with one abstention.
I was on the fence with that.
Anything else, Mr. Scott?
No, sir.
Okay. We are in the section of here in the public. Thank you all for your patience as we get through that body of work. This section is designed for anyone in the audience to speak on any, any subject that they'd like. Ladies first.
Hello, my name is Claudia Fisher, and I've contacted some of the commissioners here. I'm sorry if I've missed you. I'm in a small group of women, and we do a fundraiser. We do a vendor fair, and it's at the showroom. Nicole Glasscock is here from the showroom. But anyhow, there's an ordinance 1882 that has kind of affected our fundraiser. A lot of, almost half of our vendors are pulling out because they have to pay a $25 license fee. And, you know, I understand that we all have to pay our way and pay our taxes and that. But some of these are just vendors that work for a bigger company. They make very little money, like maybe 20%. Our, our event is just four hours on a Sunday. And this small group that I'm in, we have 20 women, and we usually donate like $1,000 to different organizations here in Danville. So with, and I've been made aware that I am responsible for collecting this money too, which I don't think is right, and I just found out about it. So it just really has put a damper on our fundraiser, and we probably will not make any money if we end up paying the fee for the people. So I just think that our leaders need to know that, how this is affecting all the people, the vendors, the small business people, the showroom, their events are probably, I know we considered canceling, but we feel that for the vendors, we need to do it. So, so we probably are going to make very, very little money, like maybe $100. So I didn't know if there's something else that could be done that could make it more fair, or I don't know.
I know we typically don't respond to these types of situations, but I did receive a voicemail from Ms. Fisher, so I just wanted to remind the commission and the public of the intention of the ordinance. To do business in the city of Danville, you are required to have a license. And whether that be a vendor at a special event or a business on Main Street or the bypass. And for special events, the requirement is that the coordinator of the event obtain those licenses because for the Brass Band Festival and other festivals, we felt like it was more efficient to have the sponsor collect those who's already in touch with the vendors. And we also wanted to remove the city code department from contacting individual vendors who could possibly just put a bad taste in people's mouths as they're trying to do, you know, cross Ts and dot Is. So there was a period of transition for the Brass Band Festival, and it's a part of that. It does not, it's a one-time fee. So once a vendor has the license, they have the license, period. So in the event that they came back the following year, and some of your vendors, if they're already businesses in Danville, and they already have the license, then they would not be subject to the $25 fee. But it's a, it is a requirement for anybody that conducts business and receives the benefit of the services provided in the city, that you do in fact have that special event permit.
I was told that they could either get a business license for the $25, and that is a one-time fee, or this is a temporary for many of the people, because we do have some people that are from out-of-town. So, but then if they were to do another one, the temporary would not cover the other one. So like, we have one vendor that is disabled, and he makes maybe $500 a year. And he does maybe three shows, right? So he's afraid to get a regular license because he's afraid he might lose his disability. I don't, you know, I don't know.
Well, there, I mean, everybody's situation, you're not, you wouldn't lose, I mean, I'm not going to offer any legal advice to that. not gonna offer any legal advice to that individual, but there's, there's no basis for losing disability or governmental benefits by applying for a business license. And for instance, the Brass Band Festival, in their first year, they did not want to put it on their vendors, they covered it. And then the following year, they put it in their packets and said, if you're gonna be a part of our festival, this is a requirement of the city of Danville, and to my knowledge, it wasn't an issue. The first year of implementation, I concede, can be difficult.
In very short notice. I found out three weeks ago when our event is, in two weeks.
Sure. Well, the ordinance is what it is. It's been on the books for two years now. Public knowledge of it, while you may have just personally known about it, is imputed to anybody who conducts business here, however harsh that may be, that's what the law is. So while I do have sympathy with your particular fact pattern, I don't recommend that any changes be done to the special event licensing. And there's two folds to that. It's important for the city to know what events go on, and it's important for, if there's any coordinated effort for police or fire or cleanup, public works, to have knowledge of the events, the duration of them. There's a host of factors that go into play here. This has been well thought out, it's standard across the state. Any city, any major city in the Commonwealth has a very similar, and I would say more expensive and more restrictive ordinance than the city of Danville does. So...
How many vendors do you have, ma'am?
Well, we had 45, then we had 25 because of this ordinance. So right there, it affected, it's gonna affect our giving, you know, I don't know if we'll make anything at this point. It depends, many of our vendors, we have really wonderful vendors, and a lot of them already have their business license. But there were about 20 that don't, and that, you know, some of our booths were $25. If we cover the cost, we make nothing. And that's happening in a lot. They're either doing, some are just dropping out because they're a little bit angry. So...
I think the one new piece you can take back, and I just fanned out this afternoon, is that I paid the $25 one time, it's good for the rest of my life. That it covers all, don't get temporary one. If anybody's gonna do it, tell them to get the, get the regular business license, because the $125 takes care of all the shows they might do this year and...
In Danville.
Yes.
Yes. That's if they get the permanent one.
Yes.
But if they get the temporary one, though, they would have to pay each of their payers that they do.
I wouldn't advise them to do that one. But I don't, I don't know the paperwork until, though, so it might be different.
It's a very simple process, and we also talk about equity with our other vendors across, you know, the city, in our farmers' markets. Our smallest tomato sellers and, at any farmer's market are required to have the same permit, however small they are. It would be inequitable for the city commission to reduce that standard for any entity, when it's been a requirement for every other vendor in the city for quite some time.
True. But I do believe these vendor fairs are probably gonna fizzle out.
Yeah.
And with that, giving will fizzle out too. I know, we just give a thousand, but, you know, for us, 20 women, that's...
That's good.
Pretty good work, we work hard for it.
Another note on the temporary license is one of the, the advantages of it is that you do not have to pay net profits at the end of the year. With it, it covers your net profits also at the end of the year, so that people don't have to worry about going through that process also, as, even if you, you know, file with your IRS or whatever, as you're supposed to, if you're a vendor of any kind, then you do not have to do our local return if you have the temporary license.
Right. Well, okay. I just wanted you all aware...
Not, not the answer you wanted to hear, but nevertheless, it's the answer, and we thank you for your time and input.
I'll pass that on to our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, comment and time. Yes, sir.
Stephen, you're an attorney, you're a young man, and you don't know what intrusive is, not really. And I'm telling you that this ordinance is intrusive. If I hold a coin show at the motel out here, do you think I'm gonna run around 50 different vendors and ask them for $25? Now, I'm a member of the American News-Matics Association and have been a regional representative. I'll give you an example. Drawbridge in Cincinnati imposed a 6% sales tax. There is not 6% to be made on silver dollars. You can buy them by the bag, from, from your computer. If Holiday Inn Express, the Hampton Inn, and the rest of them decide to have a convention, well then, they need to be here to get rid of that ordinance. You got 20 women here, not to point that out, that are mad. I'd like to see a vote from the commission as to whether you would allow this meeting as a charitable event, and to do so, I'd like to see your vote.
Can I ask what your name is?
Jim Leavell.
Thank you.
L-E-A-V-E-L-L. Now, don't tell me that everything's proper in this town, because I can take you, my wife was with me, and I went down to Clay Ingalls, and I said, I like that brick over there. Nobody but the Danville Liveberry can afford that brick. That's what the salesman said. It was a dollar and 33 cents apiece. I built an executive home for 38 cents apiece. English Tudor Tumbled Brick. There's was solid. I met with the Liveberry lady, and she told me, she said, well, it had to match the old brick. Now, don't tell me, now, I'll tell you, this park down here, this city park, the majority of these people do not agree with that expenditure. They cut the tree down that everybody loved at night, so don't be deceptive to the people. Now, this is counterproductive, this ordinance is. It's intrusive. Are you gonna do lemonade stands? Are you gonna do garage sales? Now, Stephen, you're young. You have a licensed degree. You have a good job. You can read them things any way you want to, but the people's gonna vote for these people. Now, raise your hand as to whether you're gonna call this a charitable event and not associated with this ordinance. I wanna see who's for, who's against.
Mr. Leavell, Mr. Leavell, with all due respect, sir, we're not going to, we're not going to...
No, I don't imagine as a political person that you'd want to.
I'm not a political person, sir.
Oh, yes, you are, you're elected mayor.
That doesn't make me a political person.
Let me see the city commissioners' hands.
That's not gonna happen.
That would make this a charitable event and exclude it from that.
Yes, sir.
Under our ordinance, there are provisions already for a charitable event to be excluded from paying either the 25 special fee or the $25 annual license fee, but it's a condition of charitability that the exhibitor makes no money from the activity, that all proceeds are donated to charity. The fact situation, this situation differ, whereas those vendors hope to make some money, and not 100% goes to charity, so it cannot qualify under that provision. We made provision for the charitable events already in the ordinance.
Yes, you just did so for the education bunch and the Ann Arbor bunch, didn't you? Yes, I believe you did. Now...
I would advise to hear comment on this, it's been discussed at length, so you can hear comment upon the three-minute requirement, and then move on.
Okay, I'll, I hear you, Stephen, but I've got a little bit more to say.
We have a three-minute time limit, sir.
Okay, what I have to say is, we held the meeting at Drawbridge, we took care of that.
The time has expired, sir.
Please take me out of here. We held that event, then we moved it to Sharonville, Ohio, because of that issue.
I believe he's out of order, mayor.
Thank you for your time, sir, and your comments. Anyone else?
Certainly, certainly. The $500, $600 that these people pay for the rental of the facility, we're not worried about losing that money because these people canceled, that's not a big deal to us. We're wanting to know, as the showroom, 5B Properties, is there something that we can purchase at this time where we can do this for Toys for Tots? We have four or five different events that we have throughout the year that are vendor events, that go straight back to the community. So we're just asking, as a business, is there something that we can purchase, a license that we can purchase, so these vendors can set up? And whether they make $20 or $30 themselves, but all the other money go back to the community to Toys for Tots for the fire department? That's one of our events that's coming up in November. What do it mean, is there anything that we can do as a business?
I would suggest that you set up a meeting with our codes department to determine that process, but what you would in fact need to do, just at first blush, is that if your business chose to pay the temporary license permitting fee, then you could do that for any event, if you so chose. But the licensing part still has to in fact take place, so you would have to do that per event.
And per vendor? Because it's 35, it's $25 a vendor for the occupational...
That's right.
...that lasts for five days.
That's, I would suggest that you set up a meeting with our code enforcement staff or financial staff to determine what would be required for each event that you're discussing, because depending on the charitable recognition of it, it may be different.
Yeah, it's the same, they do the same. Toys for Tots, the fire department, it's the same deal, vendors pay $25, $35 for a spot to set up, and then now they're gonna have to do this this year.
So I would suggest you call City Hall and set up a meeting with Bridget Lester in the next couple of weeks.
I've spoke with her, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's JP Bradley, I've been here a few times before. I was delighted on September 29th to see the, to see the Advocate Messenger article about the Kentucky Supreme Court's ruling that the Danville City Commission violated the Open Meetings Act in August of 2012. It confirmed what I have believed for years. It also brought back memories of that time and the difficulties the commission was having with the rules generally. The mayor was accused of, by several overstepping bounds, and there were concerns about undisclosed conflicts of interest in the purchase of the Bisco Building besides the illegal meeting. For example, the commissioner's father was an agent for the owner who sold the building, and the person chosen to bid for the city and getting a large fee for the service was the employer of the mayor's wife and the immediate former mayor. As early as April of 2012, there were concerns. A letter to the editor that I found in my files, Mariele Packrat, pointed out that the current interim city manager was himself in the pool of candidates for the position, and that this followed the resignation of a former mayor's short stint as interim city manager because of perceived death threat, death threat. All this came about because the previous city manager had been fired for, among other things, not giving good advice on the expansion and renovation of the city water plant. This maneuvering had a price tag of $300,000 and was growing, according to the author of the letter, one Rick Saris. I bring all this up in order to highlight how much better things are now. You commissioners are careful to be public about what you do, including your discussions on the issues before you, and never going into executive session without some indication of the general topic, and always reporting on any official actions you have taken in open session immediately following. Thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley.
Thanks for your time and comments, Mr. Bradley. Anyone else? Mr. Hunn?
I'm amazed at all you people that rode up in Danville and don't know where all the city streets are. I have a objection to your naming that street from Second Street to Fourth Street, because the funeral home is up further than that, so that street need to go all the way out to Royal Boulevard. Now, the address of that funeral home is 446 Bates Street, so if you get to messing with Bates Street, you gonna have a lot of repercussion from the people in the, in the city. That's my belief, now, y'all can do whatever you want to. The next thing I have to say is, that Fackler Street was named after Fackler, our family, and it was a farm, family farm, a house on Lemon Road, but I don't know why they named it their Fackler Street. But anyway, he was, what do I wanna say? My thoughts together, he was a supporter of the Southern cause during the Civil War, so you know, he had to be a slave on it, so you need to change the naming of that street. And when y'all do the history research on that, you'll find all that out. Thank you.
Thanks for your time and your comments, sir.
Can we, can we ask him a question? I mean, I'm supposed to, but, Mr. Hunn, you said you were opposed to naming it from Second Street to Fourth Street, you'd like to see it go all the way to Royal Boulevard?
That's correct.
But I thought Royal Boulevard starts at Fourth Street.
I don't think it does.
Okay, well, good, that'll be a part of our research.
I think Fourth, Fackler Street runs all the way up to the top of the hill, by the church.
I thought we were talking about from Fourth Street West.
We were, I did request.
No, I think the motion was second.
Fackler Street starts at Second Street, and runs all the way west.
Right.
Yeah.
It used to run all the way into Southern Avenue, so Southern Avenue is not there anymore. So they renamed that Royal Boulevard.
Well, we'll, we'll have some maps to clarify that.
Yeah. And the funeral home is on the Fourth Street side, west of Fourth Street, start of Fourth Street.
I heard Second to Fourth, but it didn't register because I...
And the significant of not renaming it is because of the funeral home, so you would want that street to run up by the funeral home.
Thank you, Mr. Hunn.
Ms. Hamler?
Well, I hate to disagree with James, because I'm afraid of him, but...
I think we all are.
The Fackler family's been in Danville since 1842. But Fackler Street was named for Calvin Fackler, Calvin Morgan Fackler. He wasn't born until 1884. Is that right? 1884, I believe that's right. Yes. So, no, it was 18, he was born in 1872, but he couldn't have been in favor of slaves because he was born well after the Civil War. Well, maybe, but the, the street was named for Calvin, okay? Because, because as early as we are, we're the third oldest city in Kentucky. There's very little written history in any kind of formal form, and he wrote a book when he was 80 years old called Early Days in Danville.
That's it, there you go.
And that was the first Kentucky history known to be written down. But he, he was raised in Danville, he was here in the days of the Iron Baby Angel, remember that? That book was written by Charles McDowell, that was another little effort at a history, sort of a novelist's history of Danville at the turn of the century. He wrote, not only did he write Early Days in Danville, he wrote The Chronicle of the Old First, which was the first Presbyterian church in Kentucky. He wrote a biography of Walker Daniel that is in the Filson Club, resides in the Filson Club. He was the founder of Danville and one of the most forgotten, known as one of Kentucky's most forgotten pioneers. So there's reasons for naming for Calvin Fackler. Fackler Street used to be all the way up the hill, right past the funeral home, all the way up?
Yep.
That's right. And it was renamed for Royal Boulevard. That wasn't so long ago, maybe in the 80s or the 90s. When you start, it's a slippery slope when you start renaming streets, and I'm not opposed to naming for anybody, but it is a slippery slope, because we had Fackler, now we have Royal Boulevard, and Fackler's reduced down to one little block from Second to Third. And he's right, if you gotta name it for the funeral home, for Michael, you would go from Fourth West up to where Royal Boulevard turns, I guess, because that's where the funeral home actually sits. sits. Anything else you want to?
Could you write all that down?
I wrote it down while y'all were talking.
We appreciate it, and I think you filled your three minutes well.
I probably did. And I'm also afraid that man with the uniform, so.
Thanks for your comments, ma'am. Anyone else? Mr. Graham, good evening.
Yes, sir. Janet, the eighties and nineties were not that long ago. Okay, try to be brief here. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing me to address issues. I've done it before, and certainly always appreciate the opportunity. First, I wanted to commend the commission for standing together, along with the majority of the county magistrates, for ensuring a fair EDP board in spite of the Bull County Industrial Foundation's leadership pressure and the recommendation of our KG consultants. Understandably, the BCIF, the Bull County Industrial Foundation, will still make up problems controlling of that board, but still helps ensure a more fair union moving forward, and hopefully no longer as much controlled by the BCIF, as their chairman of the board has said and reported in the paper, that they always considered the EDP and the BCIF one in the same. But moving forward, a new beginning, some patterns still seem to be staying in play, staying in play. A few months ago, as reported in the newspaper, there was a question of whether the road diet was possibly coming back into play. It was, by the executive director of the Heart of Danville. And what I've provided for you up there are part of the open records request from the Heart. It's a handout, small print, not my responsibility. I think they were trying to save some money there. Even with 2020 Vision, I still had to use magnifying glass. But now, a few months ago, in coordination with District Seven Engineers, and interesting in the Kentucky Heritage Council, there was collusion to apply, among other things, an experiment of a road diet on Main Street. It's called Testing the Road Diet Better Block. The question is, is the Heart of Danville's responsibility to go behind the scenes working against the wishes of the propos, of their, who they're supposed to be helping? Number two is that the responsibility of the Kentucky Heritage Commission messing with our community affairs regarding Main Street? The assistance of Heritage Commission Kitty Do Good did her, did get her an award from the Heart of Danville, which shows the type of games that are being played. But did our tax dollars pay for that award? Probably a small award, but I'm just saying that whether she should be involved in the way she was, as you will be able to see from that open records. This was being done while the Heart of Danville was still serving on the leadership of the Economic Development Partnership, and in the same manner reminiscent of the current president and CEO of the EDP, as he did four years later, who denied he was doing it, but in open records brought to the public light that he was intimately involved. The same pattern is shown when he was a constituent director in the Patton Administration, resulting in the reprimanding of a police officer, state police officer suspended without pay. Quote, as officer said, "The special meeting is not the way complaints are typically handled," according to Officer Rose and the current internal commander, Captain Steve Simpson. Well, we're used to that here, because this is the patterns we've seen, a distinct pattern of unchanged leadership. Bringing to question is whether or not this type of leadership has poisoned the well locally. Now, as acting chairman of a group of local businesspeople who successfully opposed the road diet last time, I'd like you to consider. We just read a short time ago in the paper, after twelve years, the leadership of the EDP, Junction City still feels like they're the backdoor child of the EDP. When this organization was supposed to be helping them. Now, are all EDP members responsible? Obviously not. Not even new hires are responsible. But doesn't it deal with leadership? From corralling local entities under one EDP umbrella, which RKG rightfully suggested be broken up, something many had suggested for years, as well as placing the city commission and executive committee to address a financial commitment without prior approval, committing financially the city, and it ended up resulting in holding off a purchase of a needed fire truck, to knocking local business owners an email because they held a different opinion in trying to protect their business. Now, again, a north is a new beginning.
How close you to ending, bud?
Three sentences? All right, perhaps a synergy effect is what's happening here. It's poisoning the well, and I would hope that the community, this commission, will consider now that the opportunity's there to hold the EDP leadership accountable. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time and thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
This is, this is a new, new thing here, a battle of history.
You want to use, you want to use one more round, three minutes?
No, it ain't gonna take me about a half a second. Rick, in the park, I was in Hopkins County over the weekend, and they had a park, and I was talking to a guy, that he's got a niece that teaches in the Bull County School System, and he was up here at a soccer game, and he was really bragging on the city park. Number two, the second one I'd like to know, are there any African-American on the EPD board? Talking about diversity, you know? We need one of them on there, too.
Thanks for your time and comments, sir. Anyone else? I, I don't know. I don't think there's anything against that. Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate it. I know that you all have a tough job sometimes, and if you reconsider that, be really honest. Fun, right? Anything else?
Give him three more minutes. He didn't take four, three minutes that time.
We are now in Commissioner Comments, and I'd like, I'd like somebody to bring me up to speed on the KLC conference.
Well, I was gonna do just that.
Please do.
Because this information that Mr. Graham just gave us is the, it talks about the Build a Better Block project, and Jason Roberts is the founder of that. And I heard, he was actually the opening speaker of KLC, and he was so good that I went into his breakout section immediately following that. And Bridget Lester was there with me in both sessions, and so was Donna Peak. And he has temporary alternatives. So, you can, you know, over a weekend, he'll go and tape the street off to make bump outs, or he'll, he'll, you know, put trees in, in pots, in the, make an island, you know? So, it's, it's kind of like a, it's a trial. He calls it speed dating for cities. So, he, he has a lot of great ideas and, and, you know, I think it would be worth our while to contact him in some way. We may be able to use him to reach a compromise on Main Street or all around town. So, he, he was very good, and he has great ideas, and like I said, they're temporary and so that you can see if something's gonna work or not. And if it doesn't work, you can do something else that's not permanent. So, he was a really good speaker. And I also heard another speaker who is actually going to be in Danville next month, I understand. His name is Jay McCord. He speaks about the four generations that are living together on earth right now, living, working in the communities together. And he helps, helps you to understand the other generations and how to communicate within the, the different generations that we have right now, and even your own generation. So, he was the last speaker at KLC, and you know, by eleven o'clock on Friday morning, everyone's ready to go home, but he, he was very motivating and inspirational, and I would like to request that we are able to attend his workshop, if at all possible, Ron. Paula Fowler has that information. She's doing that through the chamber.
I have one question. Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Are those two guys she's mentioning, are they as young as you are?
I have no idea.
They're older than Stephen, actually.
We can set up a booth, and y'all can guess my age at the conclusion of the meeting, if you'd like.
One might, one might be younger, but the other is probably older. So, anyway, KLC did, had a great conference, as always. Rick was there, I think, for part of it. I'm sorry that our other commissioners missed it.
Could I ask you a question, though? Because I, I heard something good about cities having apps. Did you go, I happened to go to that?
Yes, I did.
So, that's, that's an idea. I've kind of been buzzing around my big empty head for a while.
That was the other thing that I needed to mention. I couldn't remember what the third thing was. Yes, cities have apps now. They're interactive. There, we saw a demonstration of, the city of Edgewood has a great app, actually. But yeah, that's how you're gonna reach millennials, is through apps. They're not going to websites. They are on YouTube or they're on apps. So, if you don't have an app that they can download instantly, they're not gonna visit your city. So, there, there are different ways to do that, and I was actually asking Alex some questions this afternoon about, I think we should start with our website provider and see if they can provide us with an app that would already be in line. It's not very expensive at all.
But that'd be interesting. They're really neat if you're from out of town.
Yeah, they're really neat.
Want to find someplace to eat, you can do that. Give you directions. If you want to pay bills, you can do that.
Yes, yeah, you can pay bills. You can look at any event that's going on. You can, you can add in your, your CBB. You can actually make them admins, and they can add their own stuff. We can, I, I, it's, yeah. It's, I came out, I came out of this conference on fire, so you all look out.
Anyone else?
You know, I was something to say when it comes to Commissioner Comments. I think they're pretty fruitful, and it's always a good time to pat ourselves on the back as a community. We just passed this past weekend, had a nice Heritage Festival downtown. I think the Battle of Perryville happened, so we want to talk about our county as well. Looking into this weekend, Forkland Festival's happening, which is a nice thing to do, to have going on, plus the Bourbon Chase comes through our community twice. Brings a lot of folks into the community, a lot of people, certainly their handlers or the other people on the team, they, they stop, they eat, they, and, and we, I think last year, Nick's not here, but maybe Jennifer can help, we kind of won the best. Spirit of community, there you go. So, we'll look forward to that again. And then, moving on to October twenty-first, which is the following weekend, is when our Arbor Day celebration's happening, so we're looking forward to that. Part of that celebration, your own city commissioner, Rick Saris, will be leading a tour de ville, so I invite all of you to take a short bike ride with me and see our trails, parks, Kentucky School for the Deaf, and et cetera. So, that's going on. There's also a Jaguar jog happening in Junction City that morning, and its center homecoming. So, a lot of activity happening in our community. And so, that's some of that stuff. And I want to quickly just say, because I am your commissioner representative on the ad hoc committee for Parks and Rec, that we had a meeting today. It will be our final meeting of this year, as we let the master plan update run its course, and we will reconvene in January if this body approves that to happen, as well as the magistrates, and go forward with some of those recommendations. But I think the ad hoc committee has been very helpful for Parks and Rec in this community and keeps us being the community that we are, so.
I want to congratulate Commissioner Terry on running a mini marathon. You want to comment on that? Have you recovered?
Yep. Did it. Got the T-shirt. Not doing it again. It's a half marathon. It was an all-women's half marathon in Indianapolis. It was, it's a great race. They do a nice job.
What was your time?
Two hours and fifty-six minutes.
There you go.
My goal was under three hours, and I was.
You made it. You made it, yeah.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to City Clerk Donna Peak.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, I'm talking to you.
How many candles?
Anything else?
Ron, just for FYI, the recent survey about Parks and Rec, how the survey was sent out, and then can citizens still participate in it, in that survey?
I believe they can. I, I'm unsure right now if that's on the city's webpage, or there's a survey monkey that is put out. Earl might know that.
We will re-advertise it. We'll, we'll go through the process. I think we had, Brent Stare Carroll here was at Harvest Fest this weekend doing some survey work, but we will re-advertise that to make sure that it's fresh and out there in public, both on the website and maybe do a press release again.
You said over a thousand people have responded?
Yes, over a thousand currently.
I'd like to add, too, in, in light of our city clerk's birthday, I respectfully request the commission not hold her youth and experience against her and her job.
See, how, how long have I known you, Stephen? You were, you, you played, you played for Bait when I coached, and you were in the seventh grade, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
So, I could back into exactly how old you are. But, but see, to me, you're old, because I've known you a long time, so. Horror hollow old you are, Coach Cottle.
We don't want to go into that.
There's a gentleman who moved in this community, I think about four years ago, Mr. Glenn Ball, who has an art exhibit, and he has taken photographs of some of the graffiti on, on the trains that roll through this community. It's really neat, and, and I think it's, it's a, it's a cool thing that he came up with the idea and just did it himself, and it's right up at the community art center, so, nice little deal.
That's there now?
Yes. Oh, and that reminds me, too. Congrats to the Danville Airman Football Team for having Bait Bulldog Night. The team came out of the tunnel and had on the purple and gold, had BMS, Bait, I mean BHs, Bait High School on their jerseys, and just shocked, shocked the lights out the crowd, but it was a real good morale booster for the city, especially for Danville and Bait.
Anything else, gang? No, sir. We're going to item twelve. Payment of the bills, which you had before you do a hearing motion.
I move to pay the bills in the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred forty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. How about a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion. Call the question, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Item thirteen is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen oh six. And this is a codification of the, of supplemental code of ordinances. Donna, anything you want to read or elaborate on here?
No, not unless you all need explanation.
Because we do this every year, right?
Yeah.
Yes. It's just updating the code, and then the one online will be updated also.
I move to pass.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins.
Ordinance number nineteen, nineteen oh six.
Yes, sir.
That's a good year, right?
Right here, second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, birthday girl?
Commissioner Terry, yes. Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Mr. Saris?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash ten dash oh nine dash oh two. This is a sewer plant tractor bid award. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you. City staff is sought quotes for the purchase of a new lawnmower. In evaluating our function at the land farm and our productivity out there, they have suggested that we trade in the, one of the small tractors that we have. The dealership, the low vendor valued that at fifty-five hundred dollars. Since it's a trade-in and surplus previously not been considered, staff would, is asking that you authorize us to make that transaction. Resolution twenty seventeen, ten, oh nine, oh two, authorizes such.
So, we got a trade-in on this. Oh, I'm sorry.
We originally were seeking prices. We found three prices. The lowest was Limestone Farm. Since it was a John Deere dealership, we identified the tractor later and then said, well, let's trade that in, because we, we are losing production at the land farm as a result of regulatory changes. And so, the, that particular tractor is not as. And so the, that particular tractor is not as useful as it used to be. So therefore, we can offset its, the cost of the new lawnmower with its value.
What, where is Limestone Farm?
That is your green line implement on, on Lebanon Road.
Okay, I just.
Former.
I knew the other two and I knew they were local, but I didn't recognize that one. Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to pass resolution 2017-10-09-02 as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, is there a second? Commissioner Saris, discussion?
I just wanted to state for the public's benefit that the cost was $10,000. But we were offered.
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred trade-in on our current tractor, so the cost was actually forty-five hundred. Good job.
Any further comments? So non-chair will call the question. All in favor of the resolution and motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Resolution 2017-10-09-03, this is the Honeywell Trail easement. Mr. Coffee, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have the documents in front of you, the easement documents that's been approved by Honeywell. This easement partners and with the Heritage Hospice easement that is on Lebanon Road. It expands the area that a, that we will be able to develop a, some sort of mountain bike trail on. And we hope to bring back another easement soon and, and we will expand on that a little bit further. There's not necessarily any financial commitment to this. It is, I think it's got some terms in it where it's allowed to expire if nothing happens or they have a right to reclaim the easement back, which is similar to, we think, maybe another easement in the future, at least.
I move to accept resolution number 2017-10-09-03.
Thank you, Commissioner Saris, second. Commissioner Cottle, discussion?
Yeah, comment? Yeah, this has been, this has been worked on for a long time, so we're glad to see it come to fruition at this point. And as Earl has mentioned, this is just a piece of the puzzle for the trail system here. Also might want to mention, and I know Earl has it in his mind, just didn't think about it, but the construction of the mountain bike park will be done by several volunteers in the community. They are willing to do that for us, enthusiasts of mountain biking. So this is going to be a nice thing for communities of all ages, but primarily the young, younger folks. Gives them a place to play. And J H just said he's going to rent a bike and get out there and do it, so that's good.
This is Stephen's age.
So this is specifically for bikes? This is not a mixed-use trail?
Ideally, it, it's created for mountain biking enjoyment, but a lot of times you'll see trail runners on those also.
Non-motorized.
Yeah, non-motorized.
Non-motorized, right. So it could be walking or bike?
Correct.
Could be with caution. And I think the bigger, yeah, I think the bigger plan would be that this is just, just like a, a park that's off of the trail that's going to run Clark's Run eventually. So you'll see in other communities you go to, you'll be on a trail and then there's something else to do over here. And that's great.
You had to learn to ride your bike without the training wheels, Stephen.
I'll make my best effort to do so.
Any further discussion? So non-chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 16, resolution 2017-10-09-04, excuse me, this is an agreed order. Mr. Coffee?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We had identified or mentioned maybe at least one other time that the city did get a violation for our center sewer overflows. The, this year, the, our interpretation of the way the state is doing that is really, you've reached the end of your 20-year capacity plan that you had previously submitted to those. And the, the plan was circa 2000. We had done a majority of the work that was identified in that plan for the same reasons that we started the capacity plan with, with H D R of the wastewater system, which we're working on. I think the state revisited our center sewer overflow program that we had done in, in concert with this violation. Ultimately, they are, they are desiring to enter into the agreed order that you, you have in front of you as a settlement of that violation, rather than allowing it to linger. What, what happens is it gives them a position where they are, are proactively addressing our violation so that, so that when somewhere down the road, hopefully, we can maybe avoid more stricter sanctions like consent, consent decrees and things of that nature. Really, it's a hard subject to, to present in, in a few minutes or less. And certainly, in summary, what, what the city is, what the cities, the action the city has taken since 2000, you've spent roughly $21.6 million on the sanitary sewer system. So your effort has not been without, has not been vacant, it's been present. We've done 14 projects that are significant, the largest being 4.5 million, the smallest being 80,000, which was in pairable with the pairable wastewater plant. We did entry sample station and, and some other improvements to the operations there. You've renovated every pump station that you have. You've upgraded some forest main. You've upgraded the Spears Creek watershed significantly. You've expanded the system out of Airport Road in Junction City. You've eliminated the, the tap-on ban in Junction City. You've rebuilt everything in Junction City except for, for Noblet. The next thing in our list to do, we have about $2.1 million worth of improvements currently planned. Final cost of those things will be determined, but those are the Noblet Pump Station and, and the wastewater system review that we're, we're doing. And then also improvements to the Spears Creek Pump Station, which is, supports the Spears Creek Lagoon that we just got done building. So the state acknowledges that, that our effort has been substantial compared to other communities our size in particular. It's just a, a step in the process in administration of the center sewer utility. The, the exception is that of, of late, the EPA has been very strict with state governments and state agencies. We do need to eliminate the center sewer overflows. We do need to, to work on those, that's their position. Because we, we have some that have, that are present and that have been classified as reoccurring, then they feel like the agreed order process is the best way to address those and to really codify or, or bind the city in resolving those because they're more easily, puts them in a stronger position to take enforcement steps because they're spelling out in, in the order what those enforcement steps will be and then how we are to manage against those enforcement steps. Is that fair, Stephen?
Yes, it is.
Really, it's, it clears out, it, it more clearly states the enforcement process for them, really. After they've issued the notice of violation, it really puts in writing what that next few steps would look like if we fail to make improvements or fail to follow through on our next set of projects.
Do I hear a motion?
I move, we approve resolution 2017-10-9-04.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry, discussion?
Yeah, question. This little, this penalty that we have to endure here, is it related to, or could it be worse if we hadn't done something about our sewer rate charges, which has been a hot topic? And I think it's a good time to talk about it.
Yeah, they negotiated that down slightly. The, there will be stiffer penalties if, if you don't comply. I think the state recognized the city's commitment and previous investment in sewer system and I think we're reasonable with those fees. I think, I'm, I'm, I think Lexington paid this year $40,000 in penalties.
For the record, we're paying.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
Correct.
But once again, you know, the sewer rate, I kind of hate to say, it's kind of hard to swallow for a lot of people. But had we not moved on it, we would be looking at penalties similar or larger going down the road from not only the state, but maybe the federal government. Is that correct? Is that what I understood when we talked about it?
Yes, sir, absolutely. You don't, the position the state's taking, please be proactive. That, that gives them a lot more flexibility in how they manage our compliance.
In addition, as, as you all recall, that was a, an assessment that had not, a, a rate that had not been changed in years. And, and the downside of the fine was pretty significant. That wouldn't play too well. If, if we had a significant overflow that made its way into Harrington Lake, I'm sure that would garner statewide attention and we wouldn't need any of that. I mean, and if we're going to be responsible, everybody's talking about we want to be green and we want to protect the environment, well, that comes at a cost. And that's just, that's where we are.
We should probably note too, in case anyone's concerned, that the overflows where they've occurred only have occurred in large waterfall rain events. And when tested, there have risen to a level of containing pollutants. So it's largely stormwater that is causing the overflow of those situations that are just resulting rather expensive engineering to fix. I think that's accurate.
Right, and all cities are, are really fighting that, this battle now.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? So non-chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Do we have any need for a executive session tonight?
Yes, sir, we do, dealing with personnel matters.
And, and prior to doing so, I think it would be appropriate if we could address, and under my legal section, there's nothing mentioned there, but I would like to take a moment just to publicly comment to you on the recent ruling of the Kentucky Supreme Court in our case with the Advocate Messenger and the Open Meetings Act. As you all are aware, that decision was rendered last week. And I think it's critical that we point out that there were a lot of positive things in the opinion that in fact edified the city's position that I think are worth commenting on tonight. The charges as they arose were that the city met in some covert operation with some nefarious clandestine purpose of buying property without public input. Those were the claims. What the court edified significantly is that the city lawfully called and met in executive session. Everything discussed therein was in fact lawful and the city took no unlawful actions until one point in time when they created a new distinction in Kentucky that said, in the event that a public agency desires to buy property via public absolute auction, you have to take one additional step. And that is that after your closed session, you must announce your intention to bid. Not the maximum amount as previously requested by the allegations, but that you must in fact admit that you intend to bid. The court acknowledged that this was new. This was a case of, case of first impression. It would have never reached the Supreme Court had it not been gray. And it would have never reached the Supreme Court if you wouldn't have had public agencies and municipalities across the state cry out by virtue of the ruling. It's why you saw the Kentucky League of Cities file an amicus brief in favor of the city. It's why you saw the municipal association, Kentucky Municipal Attorneys Association, file a friend of the court brief supporting in fact the city's position. It's a significant case. There was a lot of gray. It was never clear-cut. But thankfully, the court acknowledged the good intention of the city commission to in fact comply with the law as it was written at that time. There is in fact a new requirement. The city accepts it and will in fact abide by it in the future. Now we know. Community, public agencies across the state have never operated under that manner, but they will now. So there is now clarity to the law. I'm thankful that the court acknowledged that the city had no attempt to evade transparency or evade the rules of the Open Meetings Act. In fact, it acknowledged the city made a good faith attempt to do so and acknowledged that the city's desire to secure real property at a price most advantageous to the taxpayer is in fact a valid and critical public purpose. It's why there are exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. However, in this case, they said one additional step should be taken. No one knew that was required. We do now. And so we'll adjust behaviors accordingly. But it's a huge victory for the city to have its position acknowledged, edified, and to not require the city to pay penalties, costs, and attorney's fees by virtue of the allegations made by the Advocate Messenger. You, as public officials, are in fact elected to serve what is in the best interest of the taxpayer. The court acknowledged that that is a valid and critical, important public purpose. And they said that going forward, cities and public agencies must act a little bit differently and we'll abide by that. But there's no way of knowing that the city would have done, had have been required to do that initially. And again, there was no attempt to defy transparency or to evade public scrutiny in light of the fact that this was a $2 million appropriated budgeted amount for acquisition that had been lawfully disclosed and debated in budget meetings and had significant public input. So this is a change in the law. The city's played a role in that. And we, like anyone in the public, it's a benefit when laws are clarified. So we in fact know what the law is and we intend to abide by it. But I would be remiss if I failed to make those public comments on the case.
Questions for Counselor Dexter? I have two. Does this pertain solely to absolute auction transactions?
It does, and that was a significant distinction. The court narrowed the decision of the underlying decisions. When people ask, why did we have to go all the way? There are two important answers. First of all, the first, the underlying opinions were, were very broad and overreaching, included all sales. The court narrowed it and said, no, 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 it only applies in the event of public absolute auctions without reserve. So that's, that's the critical fact that the court's analysis turned on. If it wasn't for that fact, the analysis would be completely different. Private negotiated sales or auctions with reserve, then the analysis would be different and the city's position in fact would have won.
So question.
And also, the second reason is that the advocate initially sought to unwind the transaction. That claim was later taken away, but, and dropped, but initially, they sought to have the sale unwound. And in that case, there was no opportunity for settlement because it would have questioned the title, the procurement. It would have undermined the procurement and there would have been title issues that would have gone unsettled and the city's legal ownership of the property could have been questioned in perpetuity.
So with the fact that, that this could be financially harmful to the taxpayer, do you foresee the legislature taking this topic up and, and maybe extracting the absolute auction clause out of it?
Based on the statewide interest in the case by public agencies, the Kentucky League of Cities and the Municipal Attorneys Association, I would not be surprised if there was some legislative effort to have the General Assembly weigh in and carve out an exception to allow cities and public agencies to meet in closed session and decide to, to make bids. In fact, just as they do with, with private arms-length negotiations. That would not surprise me. What the General Assembly would do with it, I have no idea. But public agencies by virtue of the opinion are put at, at a position that normal individuals are not and which is the purpose of the exception to the Open Meetings Act itself.
Thank you. We have a, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
We don't, but we need one.
I move to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter, correct?
Correct.
Pursuant to K R S 618101F.
All in favor of going into executive?
Second, and I'm in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session. Do I hear a motion that we move back into regular session?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle, is there a second? Commissioner Terry, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose like sign, we are in regular session. Madam Clerk?
We would ask that you accept the resignation of Jerry Leathers from the sewer plant. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And then we would ask also that you allow us to. And then we would ask also that you, uh, allow us to move Ian Young from Public Works to the position of code enforcement officer with the usual probationary measures. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe that concludes, um... Shall we sing happy birthday to Madam Clerk?
Oh, no, no.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
Do a hear a motion that we adjourn in honor of Madam, Madam Clerk's birthday.
I make that motion.
Motion made in second, and we adjourn.
Party's at Donna's house, let's go.